We are digitally recording this, so everyone be mindful. You are being recorded and it will be on YouTube later and we're on, what, Facebook Live right now?
No, we're not on Facebook Live at this time.
Okay, okay, but we will be later on YouTube. So keep that in mind. So we're gonna start out with communications. I'm gonna start out. Oh wait, do we have any open?
Open sessions after communications.
Open sessions after communications. Sorry.
It's okay.
We're doing, we're gonna get that from here. All right, so we're gonna start with communications. I'm gonna take this off and then I'm gonna hand it to Patricia real quick. So eight fourteen, we have the Hubbardston Summer Social, which is being done by the Parks Department with a grant from the Hubbardston Cultural Council. It is a Thursday evening and it is from six to eight PM at the Rec Field. They're gonna have bounce houses, they're gonna have food and desserts and ice cream and the music from the Green Sisters. And they are going to, once we get through this agenda, have Moon Hill and Agronomie? Agr- Agronomie? How do you pronounce that?
Agronomy.
Okay.
The Winery.
The Winery from O'Cam will be there as well. So mark your calendars again, that's August fourteenth from six to eight. It is a Thursday at the Rec Field.
Is it Agronomy?
Agronomy.
It is Agronomy. What does that mean?
I have no idea.
There's a word I asked Deb about it last week and it was like peace or something. It was a, it was a nice, it was a nice meaning to the term. Someone should look that up and not use that definition.
But nobody could pronounce it, so we're just...
I think it's Agronomy.
It's like how everybody says Giacomo's, Giocomo's and Gi- you, yeah. It's like, I give up, just whatever, we're just gonna go with it. All right, so August twenty-third, we have the Diggie Dash at ten AM with a rain day of twenty-fourth. Build your boat, twenty bucks to enter. We have trophies and prizes to win. It's a cardboard boat regatta, just in case anybody forgot what it is. But again, that's August twenty-third at ten AM at Spriggin Pond. Then the same day, there is Summer Fest at the Rod and Gun, one o'clock till whenever they're done. Live music, craft vendors, they're gonna have food and craft beer there. I guess you can buy tickets for the beer and there's more information on the Hubbardston Rod and Gun Club. Facebook, you can find out if there's, what they're doing over there. But they have like their, their live music and all kinds of stuff listed. On September thirteenth from nine to two, the Lions Club is having Field Day at the Rec Field. That's always got live music and vendors and chicken barbecue and all kinds of good fun stuff. So again, that's September thirteenth from nine to two at the Rec Field. On October fourth, there is a car show from ten to four at the Rod and Gun. And then on October eleventh, there is Non-Such Fest, which is going to be twelve to seven PM at the Rec Field. And it is going to be a food truck festival on steroids. 'Cause I'm in charge, so that's the end of that. Um, that's all I have and Tricia has stuff at the library.
Yes, okay, are we all ready?
Yes.
All right, this Wednesday, Fire Prevention Storytime. I am handing it over to the professionals on Wednesday morning at ten AM. The Hubbardston Fire Department is coming. The kids will get to put out a fake house fire with the pumper truck. Fire trucks will be there and trying to convince them to bring out some turnout gear for the kids to try on and see how heavy it is, so that's always a good time. Then in August, we have a couple of events. Oh, and don't forget that book club is twenty eighth at six PM at the library. In August, we have a couple of events. The sixteenth is Saturday Storytime for those so inclined, ten AM. The fourteenth is a super exciting night, August fourteenth, it's a Thursday night. That is the night of the Summer Social, so never mind, we're gonna do it the twenty-first. The twenty-first of August, we are doing a model rocket night. The kids will get to come in, decorate model rockets, and then we will be letting them off at the field, at the school. Yes, the fire department already knows, no, it does not require a permit, but the fire department will be on standby.
Just in case.
Just in case. So that is going to be the twenty-first. And that is it.
Okay, great.
Don't forget, it's still summer reading, you still have time to hand in and win fabulous prizes.
Oh, fantastic.
Oh, I forgot about Shred Day. Shred Day is August ninth. The town is invited at, starting at ten AM, to bring any files that they need to be shredded. Old tax documents, old documents that you no longer need in your house, and like them perfectionally destroyed. They will bring said documents here to this parking lot at the Hubbardston Public Library. The large truck will be here. They will have totes for you to put your documents into. They will be lifted onto the truck and ceremoniously destroyed. Once the truck is full, they can no longer accept. So starting at ten AM, it is first come, first served until the truck is full and you can shut that door.
Okay.
And it's free for all Hubbardston residents.
Oh, that's good. All right, anything else, that's it?
That's it.
All right.
It has to be it.
Okay, that's, that's it, we're moving on. All right, we're gonna move on to open session and we have Mr. Shea and Mr. Blanchard that would like to talk about canoe. If you guys wanna come up and talk with us, that'd be fabulous.
How we can sit here?
Are you gonna sit there, that's fine, too.
Ed Blanchard, twenty-three East Comet Pond Road.
Ed Shea, fifty-one Morgan Road.
So we'll start off by telling you how our meeting went with the Worcester Historical Society. We did our presentation, Pam Mitchell and Bill and myself, and it went extremely well. We had touched pretty much all of the bases that they wanted to see in terms of being able to take responsibility for the canoe, building a plastic, plexiglass case around it, keeping it in climate storage, making sure that it had security at Bill's place. Also, fire alarm. So they, they were very, very thorough in terms of making sure that if they were gonna transfer the responsibility of the canoe to someone, that it would be in good hands. So while we were talking with them, they asked about ownership of the canoe. And we had, we had talked previously about perhaps the ownership being in Bill's name because he's going to fit the cost of the plexiglass box and it's gonna be stored at his museum for a period of time. They said that was a bit of a concern of theirs. And the reason for their concern is that if they transferred ownership to an individual, what happens if that individual dies? What happens if they get divorced? And all of those good things that can happen to an individual. So they said to us, we would rather transfer ownership to something that's foreverlasting, such as the town. And, you know, we've, we've talked about this. And our end goal was always to have the town own it anyway because right now, there's no place to put it. But who knows in the future if we ever, if we ever did something with the Unitarian Church and turned that into a historical museum and got all that stuff out of the second floor of the library, that, that would be an ideal place to have this dugout canoe. I have, I have a picture of it on my phone, but I showed Patty a picture of it that I took in segments and then I, I had to, I had to loan that to someone, so I don't have that tonight. But I have a picture of the canoe. And to our amazement, we thought it was all mold and that. There's no mold on the canoe. So we don't have to deal with that cost and that issue at all. And it's in decent shape. Let me see if I can send you around the picture of it. But why we're, why we're meeting with you tonight is to bring you up to date with where we are. And they have now gone to the Nipmuck Indians to see if they have any interest in the canoe. And if the Nipmuck Indians say yes, we want this artifact, case closed. They, they should have first right for it and we understand that. And we just wanna be prepared that if they say no, because there's three other canoes that are in Lakewood, Sigma, that are also Nipmuck canoes. So I don't know what they're gonna do with those, those are still underwater and that. But anyway, so the Worcester Historical Museum has reached out to the Nipmuck Indians and we don't have any definitive timeframe when they might get back to us. But we're here tonight because what we'd like to do is we'd like to be able to send a letter to the Worcester Historical Museum saying that yes, the town is definitely interested in this artifact, should it be available. And that, you know, the town would obviously be responsible for it as an artifact in terms of, you know, storage and keeping it, which we presented, I think, the last time we were here, a whole plan on how we would do that and where it would be. And it would be a situation where the town would, would have custody of it, but...
Ownership of it.
Ownership of it, but then would almost like loan it to the Shea Museum. Or, or just come up with a contract that said, yes, we're gonna, a storage contract or whatever. It says, yes, you're gonna store it, yes, you're gonna display it. Yes, it would be open for the public to see. And at any particular time when the town said, we're ready to put this in another location that we have, poof. Get going.
Thank you, Mr. Blanchard. Mr. Shea, I did bring this up to you 'cause I, I think your investment into history in this region and in, it's great across the board. I'm nervous that the town will never come to a situation where they're gonna, where it will have the capacity, money, bandwidth, thought process to say, hey, wanna bring that canoe over to X? So that's my only kind of hesitation here. And I talked to you and your son about that already. And so whereas the town would technically, yes, be saying, yeah, for all intensive purposes, that's going to be yours. And it's hard to split that up.
Yeah, I mean, literally...
The town can own it and he can be the steward, right?
Yeah, literally, when the group met, they said, we need to declare someone that would officially take over as the owner. And it was the group that came up with me. I don't need anything else, I have plenty of things. But I was more than willing, those of you who have been to my farm or know what I have, know that there's always room for one more. And we have a designated spot where I can keep it, et cetera, et cetera. But I am more than happy to convey the ownership to another entity, especially in light of what the museum said. They said they will look more favorably upon an organization versus an individual. And that's more than happy with me. I'm prepared to take care of it and to bring to light what it would take to take care of it. And that would be to make the plexiglass case and have a spot for it, have that all defined. And should it be that the light shines and eventually we have a better place for it, then it would be conveyed to that other location and shared by more. That's my whole idea, idea, I want it to be shared by as many people as possible.
So have you thought, 'cause I'm worried, I have the same concerns that Nate has. Like a hundred years from now, where is this canoe gonna be?
That's cool.
Who's gonna get stuck trying to figure it out?
Yeah.
Have you thought about having the entity be something more historical, like the Hubbardston Historical Society?
Absolutely, absolutely.
What, has that been talked with them?
I have, I have discussed it with the society, but they say they really don't have any place for it up there or where it would be temperature controlled and that, but...
Well, neither do we, that's...
We do, believe it or not, we do.
What, the town?
Huh? The town does, yeah. I finally got up to see Patty and Nate's office just last week. And this is a nice place up there where it might sit in.
In the town offices?
Yeah.
I...
And there's so many offices that what are we gonna do with all of these people who, you know, don't renew contracts? Now, maybe all of the space has been spoken for, but as an option, this...
In order to, well, in order to move the police and all that up there, a lot of that space is spoken for between offices and actually getting cells and housing and stuff for the fire and the police that we don't have.
That type of conversation is unfortunately just a little premature. If we were in design phase and, 'cause I've already spoken with the Historical Society about having a sort of history of Hubbardston or something like that.
Now, is this a society or the commission?
The society is...
Private.
Gary.
Yeah.
That's private and then the commission is...
Which is the town.
Which is the town.
Kind of both.
It would, it would have to be probably the commission. And, and here again, whether the town said the town would take ownership or the Historical Commission of the town would take ownership would be certainly up to your judgment.
Yeah, 'cause I will, if I'm being honest with Ed, Bill, I will do whatever the select board wants to do. I just don't think anytime soon there's gonna be a chance to say, hey, bring that down, we'll figure it out. Like, yeah, the church, the, the meeting house is a good prospect, but that's still...
That could be a couple of years down the road.
That's still a couple of years out.
Yeah.
Who knows what will go on there? Old historical properties aren't exactly easy to predict.
The Morgan Farm will stay in the family for the long foreseeable future because I've got a Kellyanne who lives in the farmhouse and it's absolutely certain that there's no intention, not only knows what can happen, but no intention of ever giving up the ownership of the, of the farm. And, you know, so no one can predict what's gonna happen in the next twenty-five or thirty years, but my sense is that the farm's not gonna go out of the possession of our family, so...
So can I ask a question? So Ed, what is the, the timeline in which we need to get back to them on? If we don't get back to them right away, are we looking that they're gonna be doing something else? I thought it was sometime sensitive.
Well, I think what we're trying to do is show them our great interest in this and that we are ready to take ownership of it if the Nipmuck Indians decide that it's not gonna be part of what they want.
And if I may, and clarification of ownership was one of the things I think would be important. And I, I know for a fact, if we're gonna get to second base, that that needs to get done. The director of the museum, who's been there thirty-eight years, is retiring on the first of September. So to put it in some kind of a timeframe, because he was looking favorably on us and the Nipmucks, of course, have an influence on it. We pointed out by my doing research on the history of, of the canoe and whether or not the Nipmucks actually were in this area. A little bit of a cloudy area. And when the town was bought from the Indians, it wasn't from the Nipmucks. It were five individual Indians that did not represent the Nipmucks. But we do not wanna get into a political situation 'cause culturally, the Nipmucks have a lot of influence in Worcester County, but mostly southern Worcester County. But they've also purchased a, a home where they're gonna have a museum. So as Ed has clearly said, if they step in and they want it, we're, we're gonna back off. We don't want to, but, and we don't wanna get into, you know, a, a contest regarding where, who actually owns it. We do know how it was conveyed to the museum, et cetera, and that's clearly from office of residence. But I think if we can get that one point, and that is ownership, then we can then write back to them and say, we took your advice and there is an organization, whether it be the Historical Society, the commission, or the town. I think it would be easier if it were the commission or the society. But if someone other than an individual has ownership, we'd be in a better position to pursue it over further.
Do we have an idea of what the timeline is that they expect to hear back from the Nipmucks?
No, but I was gonna use this as an opportunity to get back to them, saying that this was one of your concerns and we've now addressed that concern. Can you give us an update on when you think it might be available or... Couple of them didn't... I, I don't know, I just rough drafted this for what we might, what might help. To William Wallace, the director. The Hubbardston Select Board has met again with Edward Blanchard and Lynn Shea and discussed the ownership of the dugout canoe, should it become available to the town. The town of Hubbardston, it could be the town of Hubbardston or the Historical Commission, would be proud to accept ownership of this great Hubbardston artifact. The Hubbardston Board, Select Board voted unanimously to accept ownership of the canoe, if that was so. The town of Hubbardston would take responsibility for preservation and display of this Hubbardston treasure for the public to see and enjoy. Thank you for giving the town of Hubbardston consideration should the dugout canoe become available. And it is a rough draft.
Do we know where the Historical Commission falls on this? I believe you've already spoken with them. Have you already spoken with them?
We have, but here again, that's a private organization.
That's a society, not a commission.
The society's a private organization.
They say society...
You said, you said commission.
Oh, I meant commission.
Oh.
Sorry.
Yeah, it, it could be the commission just as well as the town. In fact, it probably might make more sense to make it the commission.
It even sounds better.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, we could always word it, the town of Hubbardston...
Through its historical...
Through its historical society, or through its historical commission.
Commission.
Gotta get it right. Society is not, not a town.
Yeah, because that's private, you don't know where that could go.
Right.
Down strange.
So we don't wanna private, I'd rather, you know, me personally, rather, this is my feeling. I'd rather see the town with the commission take ownership of it.
So if we sent a letter at this point, Nate, we could say, we could restate our stated interest in potentially bringing the canoe back home to Hubbardston. And, you know, it still has time for the Nipmucks to figure out whether they want to take ownership. And then if it does come to the point where they're interested in transferring to the select board, we can bring it back to the select board and make sure that we have everything together. So it's not a signed seal deal where we get a canoe delivered tomorrow. We still have the opportunity to figure it out. This is just a expression of continued interest.
I agree.
Is that on here?
I think that's the only thing you could do appropriately.
With that said, Madam Chair, would you accept a motion?
I will accept the motion.
I'd like to take, I'd like to make a motion that the select board for its town administrator draft and send a letter stating our continued interest in the Hubbardston dugout canoe.
I recall it, shoo dugout canoe, I recall it Hubbardston.
You wanna send me your draft and I'll just add to it.
A little bit of...
There's one draft.
Thank you.
I will cross out Ed's word Hubbardston and write shoo dugout canoe.
Mashroom.
Mashroom. What is that?
M-I-S-H-O-O.
Mashroom.
I think, I think that they...
The pronunciation and spelling as Bill Shea has stated?
Yeah, I think the key fact is that if you're still very interested and would take ownership, that's what they wanna hear.
I'm, I'm willing to say take ownership. 'Cause that's what I'm worried about, that if, we have nowhere to go with it and if something goes and they're like, oh no, Hubbardston as a town needs to...
You wanna add that to take ownership or you're hesitant about that?
I, I, I don't want, I don't, I'm, I'm still concerned 'cause we have so much...
Using the word custody.
So much up in the air with if something goes haywire.
You can still share, you can still change your mind.
What do we do?
Stewardship.
You can still change your mind at a later date.
And I'm also hesitant 'cause we only have three members here, not the full five.
Yeah, no.
So our initial vote, I don't know if anyone has the language from the last vote we had on this one. I believe it continued, it was expressing interest, correct? Or did we use the word taking custody in the last motion?
That was nay, correct?
That was full support of...
Yeah, we had supp- we supported them in their pursuit.
And they were, yeah, true.
That was what we did and that I'm fine with. But with only, again, three members here, we're still missing two to go forward. 'Cause I'm personally very hesitant in the long run. I agree, I think right now, Bill would have a beautiful house for it and it would be lovely there. I'm just worried in the long run, what's gonna happen?
Would you like the...
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Motion to direct the town administrator to draft a letter of support to the reclamation of the canoe, signed by Jeff Williams. On behalf of the select board is made by Member Monroe, seconded by Member Yan. Motion is passed by unanimous vote.
So I think I'd like to stick with my motion as stated. I know it's not exactly what you're looking for, Ed, but hopefully that will give them enough to move forward and then they can always come back to us and say, the Nipmucks don't want it and we would happily do this, what's your plan? And then we can sit back down.
Yeah, or the, yeah.
And come up with a plan. That way we have a full board that night, we have the Historical Commission we can converse with.
Yes, that's the other piece.
Or we might be able to have some contingency plans for...
I think, I think the, I think the full plan was pretty much what, what we had given you during the first meeting, that yes, it would be stored at the Morgan Farm. It will, we'll build a plexiglass case for it. It'll be climate controlled. He has the fire control as well as police protection for the property. And, you know, it's probably gonna be in the best hands it could possibly be, which, nothing's forever. But certainly, certainly is a great, a great place to store this asset of the town's that will bring people here to see it.
So I think that...
And you know who else has one, Phillipson has one. Yeah.
I think furthering Katie's point here, you know, the other opportunity is that when, if they come back and say, yes, we'd love to work something out with Hubbardston, it also gives us an opportunity, as stated earlier, to come up with whatever that agreement looks like, right? Not only does it say, okay, Bill Shea has custody, it's owned by a town, whatever it may be, but in the event that Bill Shea's family says we don't wanna vote anymore, where does that vote go and how do we deal with that? So I think we still have a lot of details to work out. And to Katie's point, I think it would be better to have our full board here to make sure everyone was comfortable with that. But I think for right now, we can happily say, we're continuing to support this endeavor. And if they want more and they say, hey, you know, this isn't gonna cut it for us, we're leaning to doing something else if the Nipmucks don't want it. We need something stronger, then come back, tell us and we can sit back down.
Well, there's a possibility the Comet Pond Association would take ownership.
And that would be another option besides, you know...
I'd rather see it come to the town, but we've been in business for forty-three years. And here again, we're nonprofit and, you know, um... If you'd like a backup plan to, if Bill says they don't want it, I could probably see if the...
How about we draft the letter of support in the initiative as is and then after the letter is drafted, we have a meeting of all of the parties involved, the Shea family, the Comet Pond Association, the select board, the Historical Society, this Historical Commission, and we'll, we'll let it be known for anybody that is of avid canoe interest. And we can all just sit down one night and hash it out.
I, I, I think, yeah, at least if there was a rep that could speak for each of those parties.
Admittedly, that was Patricia's idea.
I would, I would lean towards that, so that way we can have a meeting of minds and try to figure out, I think the best place is your area, your, your museum. I'm not gonna like pretend, but I'm, like, what happens if? That's, that's my, that's my work.
That's thinking if they all sit down together and then...
Yes, exactly, figure it out.
Each has a representative and while we're at that meeting drafting almost like a contract language to say, this is all of these, um, entities that are interested and here are the stops in case something should happen, in case this should happen, the what ifs. That way everybody's protected, the artifact itself is protected, um, and...
And that probably can be stronger with all those boards signing off on it.
Exactly, and then if they, if the Historical Commission comes, the Historical, um, museum comes back and we've already had that to present to them for even stronger, like here, we built this safety net for this artifact. If the Nipmuck community comes back and says, nope, we don't wanna repatriate this artifact, you may... If the Nipmunk community comes back and says, nope, we don't want to repatriate this artifact, you may keep it, um, as part of your town's history. Okay, well, now we can present to the Historical, uh, museum, this is our safety net. We've thought of all of the stops and the town is going to be taking ownership of it. We have put stewards in place to make sure that it has a safe home that people can visit.
I believe that enables us to continue the dialogue with the museum.
Sure.
Keeps the door open on both ends of the community, both in the community and with the Historical Museum.
You want us to start thinking about drafting, what, what that, what that agreement might look like?
That doesn't hurt, I don't think.
It's a little cart before horse, but if that's what you want to do.
Change time.
Nah.
Yeah, I mean, I think anything we can give to them upfront is a bonus.
You can draft that, legally, take a look at it.
Yeah, absolutely.
Absolutely. If you have legal, in, in my mind, it's more of a contingency document.
Absolutely.
Like in the event Kellyanne does decide to, to move and be an EMT in Miami. And then, then it goes, and then it goes to the next group if the town can, is not in a spot.
Might worth it.
Does the state have anybody that specializes in this area?
Yes, they do.
They do? Have they been made aware of this? Or at least somebody wouldn't contact the pointers?
I've been hesitant to make too many people aware of the situation.
They want to take control of it.
No, just because we don't know. If the Nipmunk community wants it, it's done.
Yeah, but- Yeah, I understand that, but you, it doesn't, I don't think it would hurt to reach out to somebody from the state that specializes.
So there's the state his, the historic preservation officers that you can reach out, there's one assigned to each pocket of the state.
Yeah. And you just lay it on and say, this is where we're at. Now the chance we could-
The state archaeologists and-
Is it that woman that was speaking at town meeting, one of those?
Shells.
Yeah.
Um, where I would go is actually reach out to, um, at UMass, they have a, um, someone who specializes in this. Um, this is what my professor does.
There's a lot been written about the three there in late when they were also.
So she, she would be my point of contact that I would reach out to.
And there's going to be involvement in that.
So I think we might be getting a little into the detail here.
Patty's, Patty's very knowledgeable on this subject.
Well, we, I mean, so I second his motion already, so, um, so the motion's on the table.
Okay.
Wait, yep. Let's, let's- The motion as is is still just letter of support.
Yeah.
No mention of ownership, no mention of contingencies, just the Hubbardson Select Board acting through its town administrator is sending this letter that we still support this initiative and will continue to be aware and part of the discussion.
Are they, excuse me, one more question.
Go ahead.
Are they looking for a letter for ownership right now or are they just want everything set up or casing them?
I think a letter of ownership is, is, is out, it sound like to me that's what they're looking for. Yeah.
That we're willing to accept ownership of this item, uh, if the Nipmunks say no.
Ideally.
Yeah.
If they don't, they don't want it.
Yeah, and I think unfortunately, I don't think that's something we can do tonight with a partial board and without other players in the room, but Tricia's point,
But support letter will help.
But Tricia's point, that is something we could probably set out in short order.
Yeah, I think in a week or two if we had to, I mean, I don't think it's a pressing.
When do you meet again?
August fourth, but that meeting is already kind of packed. If we were to do a session of that nature, I would likely suggest that we did it, like you say, at six o'clock or five thirty over at the senior center so that we can still have the full meeting of the Select Board.
To separate meetings.
And then there is likely to be an executive session that evening.
So I think the other thing, back to Tricia's idea, is I think that meeting can go on with the representative from the Select Board, whoever that may be. Figure out those pieces and then someone from that meeting, like the unit, can bring back that piece along with Ed and Bill
I think we got that.
back to the Select Board at the next meeting.
Madam Chair, if there were a way, you could, through my office, whatever, can, can Patricia put that together, get, get what, what's going on and then we'll talk about it.
Well, first I think we have to, do we need to vote on this?
Yes, can you vote on that?
It doesn't sound like they're really interested in having a le, a second support letter.
Yes. Yeah. Well, let's, we still got to vote on it though. Okay. So let's call this for a vote. All in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
All opposed? Aye. Or let me, yeah, but yes, yeah, me. Me, um, so I guess it passes.
Yep, that's fine. Nope, I am more than happy.
So it's going to be kind of what you want, but not totally what you want.
Yeah, I mean, they, they already got a letter of support, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So now they're looking for a commitment in case the Nipmunks do not accept it.
But what we can do is have Patricia start working on getting that full thing together so that we can actually get something that we want.
We can get it together and then we can have a meeting with a full board.
We'd like to get this done before the director retires because he's sort of really interested in the Town of Hubbardson and us.
If we just have the chairs meet with you guys in my office, Patricia, during the day. We don't need to make the biggest to do of it with, and then we'll be able to come forward to the Select Board with ducks in a row.
Okay.
And that can happen in relative short order.
Sure. Appreciate your help and support on this, you know, it's, it's a lovely piece.
It's history, it's artifact, it was founded in Hubbardson. I think everybody should be on board, but that's, you know, that's why it's called a democracy.
Yeah.
Sure, the officer.
I agree.
And maybe, maybe you should take a look at some space in the new office up there where it might fit.
It's, you come down, I haven't given you the grand tour yet. You come down whenever you want and I'm going to tell you about what we're, what the plans are. And if you can come up with a good spot, we'll, we'll consider it.
I mean, if there were no Nipmunks around here, but how do you know they didn't come up here and do a little battle?
What are you doing on?
Tomorrow afternoon I can be free.
You don't know.
Yeah, I think that the ownership is very, very big.
Right.
All right, so are we moving forward here? Are you guys all set for at least now?
Yeah, thank you very much.
A little bit.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Give me a time, it's good for you.
All right, perfect.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to move on to our next agenda item, which is the ADA presentation with, um, James. Can you please pronounce your last name? I'm sorry.
Well, actually, it's, it's-
Introduce yourself.
I'm going to do a quick comment and then it's going to get to your point and then Mike's introduction, I'll do a brief one and then we can go forward. So technically, this was a grant which you worked with, you contract with Central Mass Regional Plan, Connor Romaschare, which I thought he was going to be here tonight, but I guess not.
I was also under the, under the understanding.
Which is fine, yeah, which is fine. So you work with CMRPC, they, um, apply for MOD grant, Mass, Mass Office of Disability and to do this ADA plan, which we'll get back to again. And then we, CLW, Center for Living and Working, Inc. and myself have a, a consulting contract with C, CMRPC to do these plans for the ones that they applied for. The contract is actually with the Center for Living and Working, Inc. as a prime contractor, CMRPC. I've been sub, we joint venture, um, in partnership, we've been doing that for probably close to twenty years. And, yeah, we've done these plans together for CMRPC and then for you. So I'll let Mike introduce himself and then formally I'll come back a little more myself and then we'll move forward with the presentation.
Excellent, thank you, Jim. Yeah, hi, hi, everybody. Again, I'm Mike Kennedy, I'm the ADA access specialist at Center for Living and Working. On behalf of Center for Living and Working, AKA CLW, in partnership with, um, CMRPC, in partnership with James, Jim Maisick. Thank you for choosing us to do your plan and I just wanted to give a shout out to, um, all the staff in town who either opened buildings for us or, uh, you know, answered our questions that we had during our interviews. And, uh, yeah, very, very helpful. So, um, in lieu of the time constraints, uh, I'm just going to highlight the recommendations as opposed to-
Good, good format we follow.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Mike and Jim, my bad. First and foremost, I would like to thank you on behalf of the town for going out of your way and touring the meeting house before it was accepted.
Was it useful?
It was incredibly useful. That was a lot of data that I didn't have before.
And what did you end up doing?
The town is in the process of accepting the meeting house. Turns out a title search on a historic property takes a while. So.
More than a hot minute.
But thank you, that was great.
Great, excellent. So just a little myself, what we do, I'm going to, myself, then I'm going to go with the format of the presentation. We can talk a little about the ADA and the 521 CMR. And then, um, then Mike's going to talk about self-evaluation. I'm going to go back to a real quick overview of what some of the findings and general work. And I'll come back to a couple of points. So we'll try to keep it, we'll keep it rifer than normal. As for myself, I'm a certified professional planner, forty-plus years in, in the trade. Season towns in Eastern and Central and Western Mass. And then my, my last thirty-four years prior to retirement, twenty twenty, was with the Regional Planning Agency, was part of Light Clinic Mission. I was deputy director there and I did, um, CDVG oversight construction, all sorts of things, housing rehab, uh, whatnot. I did some of these outside my jurisdiction, not, or not type of conflict. So I started part of that in Central Mass and he's a part of the state. I don't think, so I think, I did, I did Hubbardson planning back in two thousand and seven. I think right after that is when CLW, uh, which we hooked up, I think, or started working together right after this planning. So I just went independently, so that was eighteen years ago. So, that background. So, uh, on, on the ADA, so the Americans with Disabilities Act was signed into law back in nineteen ninety by President George H.W. Bush. Uh, it's a civil rights law. It's intended to be the equal access to all programs and services for persons. And also that civil rights are guaranteed to persons regardless of physical or mental impairment. There are five titles under the ADA. What really adheres to you is Title One, uh, which is employment. So the Equal Employment Opportunity Act, which you're familiar with. And Title Two is access to programs and services. And under Title Two is required for all jurisdictions to have a, um, ADA self-evaluation and transition plan, uh, which is what you have. Uh, the current standards for under ADA are the two thousand and ten standards and they went into effect in, I think it was March of two thousand and twelve. Uh, Massachusetts also has 521 CMR. It's a specialized section of the state building code. It only is triggered by construction. And it's based upon the work being done versus the, um, the value of the building. So if the work being done is less than thirty percent of the value of the building, under, under a hundred thousand dollars and just the work that's being done must be accessible compliant. This is something to keep in mind for the forty-eight Guardian Road building. If it's, if it's under thirty percent and more than a hundred thousand dollars, then it's the work, um, plus an accessible means of access. Bathroom and, and there's a couple of things, the drinking fountain, a couple of things have been done. If the value of the work being done is more than thirty percent of, um, the value of the building, um, then everything must be accessible compliant. The whole building was made compliant. And it's a three-year look back. So now you're starting to work on Guardian Road. So it's a three-year look back. So keep track of what you're doing there because you get to a point, you know, if you trigger that thirty percent and you're going to bring everything and you'll, I'm not going to go through it tonight, but you'll see in the report, there's a lot of stuff that's going in. Not, not, and also the sites that you don't occupy, which you're responsible for. So we look at, we look at both ADA and 521 CMR. Um, the standards differ. ADA regs are about this thick, the 521's about this thick. And we look at the-
Black.
We look at the higher standard of the two and that's, you'll see that in the report. ADA, ADA also allows for other means of addressing the areas of non-compliance. You can relocate a program or service, you have reasonable accommodation, you can alter a policy or procedure. So that, that's a way of, of doing this. So the format of the plan, we have, um, four sections and I'm, I'll go briefly on these. We have a front-end piece, um, we have the self-eval, which Mike's going to talk about. Um, we have the transition plan, the facility assessment, so I'm going to do a quick overview and a couple of highlights. And then the back, the appendices, uh, survey forms, any kind of sample documents that we came up with as part of the self-eval that we've recommended to take action on. So on the front-end piece, um, we really want that to be your one-stop shopping center for, for ADA. We have a lot of stuff, I'm not going to go through every single thing, I'm just going to pull them. We talked more about the ADA and the five titles, we talked more about other federal accessibility regulations you're bound by. And also we have contact information here, we talked more about 521 CMR. We have a chapter on alterations to historic properties and the exceptions, which will take effect for the building you're about to purchase. We have another chapter on EV guard, uh, charging station guides. There's no regs on EV charging stations. Uh, however, there are regs on parking spaces, reach range, excessive routes. So we have that in here. So if you are going to put one in the future at your, at one of your, your locations, then you look at that chapter, that's what you got to do. We have a section on our chapter on emergency parents versus disabilities, that would be of interest to police and fire. We have another chapter on ADA service animals versus emotional support animals. Detail of what's, you know, what, what is what and what you can and cannot do. Another chapter on ADA compliant portable toilets. Another, because we've never come across one in the twenty-plus years we've been doing this. We have a chapter on emergency eyewash stations. Yeah, you, you, you-
I didn't get them.
No, you, you, you get them and they say, yeah, but when you go in, it's, it, no, no, you can't, you don't have the clearance, you don't, you don't. The dispenses are up here. And then we have another chapter on the accessible, various types of excessive routes of travel, uh, materials. We have a cost, a pro and a con, we have photographic representatives and also on playground material services. So that's all in there. So I'm going to turn over to Mike, he's going to talk about the self-eval and, and the findings there. And then I'll come back, you know, and talk in general about some things we found about the, but everything is much, I don't know if you have these tonight in electronic format. Very detailed here, you'll, you can find the specifics.
We have problems?
I would, I did not send them the draft, boy, because I was waiting on the final version.
Okay. Well, so we'll do the final version based on any comments we hear, if it was posted on the website, anyway, any comments, any kind of, we might have had a, no, we didn't have any edits on this one, we did it for, um, let alone, we didn't have any for, for this one. So, uh, that we've done internally, so. But I'll turn over to Mike and he's going to talk about the self-evaluations.
Great, thanks, Jim. Yeah, so, uh, like I say, in lieu of time constraints, I'm just going to highlight the recommendations rather than, um, go over the detail and the findings of the self-evaluation. And, um, you know, this information actually, uh, was disseminated from the completed, um, um, self-evaluations that I, you know, survey forms that I received along with the, um, sample job descriptions. And just looking on your website, Mass Office on Disability and, um, sending emails to Nathan. So, uh, with that being said, I, we'll just go through the recommendations. One, uh, through annual town meeting action, uh, accept provisions of Mass Dem Law, uh, Chapter Forty, Section Eight, Section Eight J, to establish a commission on disability and allow the Select Board to appoint a minimum of five men, uh, members to serve on this commission. If you have questions on, uh, commissions on disabilities, um, feel free to contact me. We have a commission on disability in Millbury, where I live, and I cheer that. So I'm pretty well versed on, um, uh, you know, like disability commissions. And one of the first things there they'd be able to do is to monitor this soon-to-be-completed ADA plan. Next up is post the name and, uh, contact information on the ADA coordinator on the town's website and in the town hall. So currently, uh, Nathan, uh, serves as Hubbardson's ADA coordinator. Recommendation here, um, create a, uh, an ADA coordinator webpage under town departments. And, uh, you know, post the ADA, the announcement of the, um, ADA coordinator there along with a copy of this ADA plan. Next up would be contacting the Mass Office on Disability. So, uh, they can update the information on Hubbardson's ADA coordinator. It, it's a quick phone call and it's actually a great, uh, resource. I, um, I have gone there myself to look for, uh, you know, who the ADA coordinator is. So, uh, you know, very helpful. Adopt a, a public notice of non-discrimination and post it on the town's website and in the town hall. So anything that goes in the town's website can probably just go in under the ADA coordinator's, uh, page. You know, the, next is post the ADA grievance procedure in the town hall and on the town's website. Again, in the newly established ADA coordinator page. The grievance procedure should also be made available- The grievance procedure should also be made available to all staff, departments, committees, and boards. The recommendation is to update the ADA coordinator's name on the sample grievance procedures submitted during MOD's ADA plan proposal, along with any other, you know, current pertinent ADA related documents. And we also provide a sample ADA grievance procedure in that appendix C. Next is to adopt a formal reasonable accommodation policy and develop a reasonable accommodation request form. A sample reasonable accommodation policy and request form for adoption by the select board is in appendices D and E. Incorporate nondiscrimination language, essential function requirements, reasonable accommodation language, physical requirements, employment, posts in job descriptions. Ladies and gentlemen, Hubbard's Plan, Keltic. The, with the exception of one sample job description, you hit, you hit all the highlights, you had essential functions, physical requirements, and a, you know, little blurb that says reasonable accommodations will be provided to perform the essential functions of their job. We're almost done. Regularly inspect facilities to ensure compliance with program accessibility and initiate repairs, actions as required. So, you know, really, the disability must maintain an arable work and conditions, those features that are necessary to provide access to services, programs, and activities. And it's recommended that facilities are inspected regularly to ensure compliance, you know, with program accessibility and actually, that's redundant, my, my apologies. So an example, I was able to come right into this meeting because, you know, there was a, an accessible route, right? You know, to a little ramp that brought me to the back door. So, that, that's a, an example. Adopt auxiliary aid indoor accommodation request language in all meeting notices. In all meeting notices, so consideration should be given to printing or ordering some documents, reports, newsletters, minutes, and alternative formats such as large print, braille, audio recordings, and documents stored electronically in accessible formats. It was CDs back in the day, but now, now we're going even more digital, so now thumb drives or sent electronically and the person at the other end can download it on his or whatever media it
A new website that launched
I'm sorry, what's that?
A new website that launched approximately three weeks ago, that is still very much an active project, takes a lot of pride in their accessibility. Civic Plus, I think, really
It's still Civic Plus?
Yeah, it's still Civic Plus, it's just
Yeah, we've got good results.
Yeah, and a lot of that, the reason they promoted and sort of forced us to move to a newer version was about disability.
Oh, okay, you know what? I'm gonna be learning about that myself in my own commission on disability. I know when we resumed, when we resumed meetings in September, that's gonna be one of the subjects, you know, with Civics Plus because Milbury uses the same, I'll just say web host, for lack of better terms.
Because it's literally a button, whenever you're writing anything, you have to click check for ADA compliance. And then it does
Oh, okay.
It's a little thinking deal, and then it lets you move forward.
One thing I didn't note on your website, though, there's not a, you have all the departments and the boards, there's nothing for select board?
Yes, there is.
There is, here.
There is now?
I'll show you, I don't know when the last time you looked at it was, but
Not, not with
It's right under the government page, third column, select board.
Government.
Okay, so when I went, maybe I didn't see
Maybe it was Supreme or Chair.
It might have been, because all the time I looked, I didn't slide that.
Yeah, this just launched.
Yeah, I was, I looked, I said, wait, I can't find a select board, I'm just wanting you wanna see, it's right here. Yeah, okay. It's all, yeah, they stand, it's a standalone by itself, all right?
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and my friend who actually is visually impaired and uses Jaws screen reading technology said that it was a, and this is a while back now, too, that, that the website was a breeze to, to navigate. And just two more pieces, purchase a portable assistive listening system that can be used at public meetings. Preferably portable ones, you know, that, you know, that can be used in here, could be used if at where you would hold your right annual town meetings.
Question, how much are those? And if I told you that we were building another meeting space, is that what you would suggest kind of to, to bridge the gap there? I'm not stating that with the current budget, we could afford something like that.
Yep.
But if, is that the, the first thing you would say, like get whatever that tool is?
Very based upon how many transmitters and what they type, and then if it's portability, how many transmitters, I mean, you have to go, what, what the heating size. We've, typically the ones I know, we've worked with folks, like six to ten thousand dollars maybe. Maybe for a town your size, six thousand dollars might be. But those are also, now that the plan is done, I don't know if you guys ended up applying for MOD funding this, this past funding round, but a lot of the municipalities that work with, after the plan is done, they apply for MOD the next cycle for those assistive listening systems.
We will be applying for MOD the next cycle
So that's something you could
With as much in there as possible.
Yeah, that, that's something, because I know a lot of times we've worked with the
Yeah, and you know what? It just so happens, my agency has a, a deaf and hard of hearing department. And they're very well versed in assistive listening systems. And we have assisted other, you know, local towns in purchasing these systems. You know, just two or three towns over, Lancaster, they're one of the towns that reached back out to us and, you know, got a, you know, assistive listening system through us. My, my friends in the deaf and hard of hearing department, you know, forwarded me like, like three different resources that you can, you know, contact.
Can I ask you a question?
Yep.
Can you explain assisted listening device? I, I understand the concept.
Yep.
But I don't know what, how does it work?
Yeah.
So is it like amplify sound for the person, so they can hear what the person in front of the room saying?
Yeah.
Basically?
Yeah, the, the person that would, that, that would use it would actually have, you know, headphones on, some kind of headphones on. I know, like at town meetings, you know, when, you know, the cable company is recording, they actually have, you know, they have the soundboard there. And you could actually, again, I don't know what I'm talking about, but you can basically plug in to those, that, that soundboard with these assistive listening
They're probably Bluetooth now.
Uh, they could be.
Cable free, Bluetooth.
Or they could be, you know, Wi-Fi.
Yeah.
Yeah, so they could, it's like a wireless headset maybe then?
And then, some are hearing incompatible, too, so, does have that, so not only, if you have a hearing, you can also make it so it adjusts to your current hearing. So there's different, you can go online, you can, there's all sorts, but they said you've got your own department there, so that's why I pray quite a system.
Yeah, so, you know, you know, that would be, you know, something you could work, you know, through your IT department or your, you know, cable, or indoor cable.
Cable access.
What's that?
Cable access.
Yeah.
People that run out of video cameras and stuff.
Yeah. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. No, my pleasure. And, you know, and, and if when these are, devices are purchased, you know, just let it be known that, that these devices are available for people to use. You know, you could post it in the, I, I know a lot of town meetings take place in school auditoriums or, or gyms or something. And you just have, you know, some signage similar to like what you would see, you know, office doors, bathroom doors. And, you know, it'll have, you know, assist, you know, available assistive listening devices. And it even has, there's a couple sign, sample signs that are in the actual self evaluation. You know, so that way people know that they exist and they can, you know, talk to somebody.
So, one more question, I'm sorry.
No, don't.
I don't wanna cut you off.
Oh, no, no.
So are those assisted hearing devices for people that have hard, that are hard of hearing or deaf, or both?
Well, it could be both. Both, I mean, someone who's profoundly deaf would, or should I say completely deaf, would probably have to, you know, rely on a solid, American sign language interpreter.
You don't, there's no technology out there for somebody to hold a little thing in their hand, and somebody's speaking, and it puts it into writing?
As a, that is a, it helps, but American sign language is not necessarily prepositional English like, like we're all talking here.
Okay.
You know, the, I'm, I'm, you know, referring to people who were born deaf.
So what if you're deaf and blind?
Um, oh, that's a
I mean, I, I ask a lot of questions.
No, no, no.
So if you're gonna cover bases, you gotta cover all the answers, right?
Yeah, believe me, the, I'm familiar with that.
Yeah.
That is a
Good question?
No, no, no.
Just kidding.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, it is. But that is, that kind of expertise is really more meant for, you know, the mass commission, you know, for the deaf and hard of hearing. They would be better versed at, at that.
Yeah, so, I mean, if we have to supply equal access
Yeah.
Right, to every being.
Yep.
Okay? And if you have a blind deaf person that wants to join your town meeting, we have to make it happen.
So that's very critical, and I think you might have mentioned this already, that in your post, but it's in report.
Yeah, in the report.
Okay, in the report, very critically of sample language, that if you need a reasonable accommodation, whether it be for, you know, hearing, sight, blah, 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 and we have language here, you know, please contact. And give yourself enough time in advance. So we recommend at least, we say at least ten to fourteen days, because you, they take you time to find someone if you need it. Because if they say, well, twenty four hours for the meeting, you're not gonna find someone if you need to get someone, an American Sign Language interpreter or, or have to do something to braille quickly, I mean, you're not gonna, it's not gonna happen, so. But we have that language in there, and that's to give you enough time.
I mean, there's gotta be companies that specialize in this equipment, that you could rent one for the day for the meeting, or, you know what I'm saying?
And you can, you can, you can purchase the time of someone to do, you know, the American Sign Language. There's, there's places that will, you have to pay them whatever the hourly rate is, and then they're there, I mean.
So there, the state does help a little bit, right? So we had town meeting once that someone was requesting, they were hard of hearing, they requested someone who did CAR, right? So essentially, they had a screen that they brought with them.
Yeah.
They rolled it out, she had like this little keyboard underneath the desk. And she just typed verbatim, like a transcript of who was talking and what they were saying.
Like a stenographer.
Yes.
It was large enough for that person to see.
It was large enough for that person to see.
Yeah, I've seen that.
But you can request these referrals essentially to people from the state. State's not gonna pay for, for the town, but
Right, obviously.
That's why we generally say we're asking people to request the accommodation, right? It's not our obligation to provide an accommodation for every human being, every possible combination.
Well, you have to make it a V L tour request, yeah.
Yes, but if someone, but we, we are not always going to be able to anticipate a request, right? Like, we might be able to, first of all, we wanna know if we know that we have people in the community who are hard of hearing, who would come or do come, or, you know, have we had that request in the past? And then it would be worth investing in such a piece of equipment, or borrowing it from another community if we needed to. But with a lot of these, you know, I think what they, I think what they're saying is correct, is, you know, making sure we're advertising it on all of the meeting postings and everything else, and someone needs to contact us. And then if they give us the request, that's Nate's job to start calling around and finding how do we make this happen?
It's not a reason if somebody shows up at, at the meeting that night and
Who's my CAR person?
Yeah, well, see, listen, the person with a disability is probably not gonna just show up, right? They're gonna reach out anyways.
Well, you hope so, yeah.
You know what I'm saying?
Not necessarily.
Well, not necessarily, but, you know, maybe you have an auditor going around checking to see if the stuff's available, I don't know, they have
But, but you also have to remember, things have changed a little since the last rendition of these pieces, right? Because we have something now called YouTube, and a lot of towns' videos are on YouTube. A lot of towns' videos are available, not all, but a lot of them are available with closed captioning.
Yep.
Right? So, and a lot, sometimes you can even do it live, right? So people have the ability to watch and have that accommodation that they never were able to have in the past. And that, you know, well, I can't participate in the meeting, let's say physically go to the meeting, and then how am I going to watch along? Wait a minute, I can physically participate at home and see what's happening.
Yeah, people could be watching us right now on YouTube Live.
Are out town meetings live?
Not YouTube, but the, no, no, no.
No, but they are recorded and posted after.
They're, they're posted after.
So we do have a community member, and she is hard of hearing, and her husband comes with her and, or one of her children comes with her, and he signs to her while the meeting is going on. They said in the back, she's never requested accommodation whatsoever.
Well, some people
She's also an ASL interpreter as well and can do it herself, but she turns off her implants during the meeting because of the background noise from behind her is impair, is impairing. So her husband will come with her to the meeting and he will sign the entire meeting to her when it's time to vote and what we're voting on.
What a good guy.
Yeah. Yeah, so
And we print our warrants and everything is in physical form as well, but if, ahead of time, when we say, here's the warrant online, where we posted online, online is ADA accessible, but at the same time, like if the request came into Mel, they're requesting the warrant in some other fashion, you know Mel and I would hunt down the easiest and fastest way we could get them the warrant in whatever form they needed.
Thank you.
Yeah, so these devices that I'm talking about, you know, Heather was talking about, the CAT reporter, reporters, the, these are for people who are, can hear some, you know, or hard of hearing or people unfortunately like myself, whose hearing is getting a little compromised. And, you know, I, I can see myself wanting to use those kind of devices, or at the very least, you know, I'll be wearing some kind of, you know, hearing, maybe not aids, but, you know, some over the counter things for meetings, yeah. Because, you know, I'm at that stage now where, where it seems like everybody mumbles. Yeah, so, not happy about it, but it, it's reality. So, and finally, incorporate the guidance provided in, you know, Chapter Seven of the, you know, a self evaluation transition plan when developing an emergency management plan. And more specifically, that notification and assistance to persons with disabilities be included in the emergency management plan. Yeah, the, yeah, we have a very nice, you know, write-up on emergency preparedness and, and like I say, ever since and, and like I say, ever since two thousand and ten, after that, I forget which hurricane it was that, that decimated New Orleans, but.
Katrina.
There, there was some very, very bad treatment of people with disabilities down there during that disaster, so that's what brought on, you know, this emergency management plan stuff. So, so that's it, I, I needed, you know, I, you know, streamlined it, but overall, you know, you know, Hubbardson and I did well, especially with the jobs, with those job descriptions. So, I just say, keep up the good work and, and any other questions you have?
I have.
Yep, here are none. You know, if you do have questions, you know, my contact info is right there on the plan. So, I'll send it back to Jim.
So, this is your plan, if you had, didn't get a copy, it's a hundred and seventy pages in length. So, that's where you're streamlining. So, you will hopefully get, we'll try copies of those soon. The format of the, of the plan, obviously, of the individual building assessments, which that's as part of the transition plan. The way we like to do it is we will have a general description, this is one of the library, of the building. It's like, you know, how many stories, is it wooden framed, is it, is it masonry, you know, what year was it built? You know, what are the programs and services? So, if you're not familiar, you get a quick read of what it is, representative photograph, responsible parties. And then what we like to do, and in this case, there's only about a page in our, a page and an eighth, but we'll do a, a narrative overview of all the areas of non-compliance. So, you, and I hate to use laypeople, but as laypeople, you can quickly read through and get an idea of what the issues are. Your facilities folks will be more interested than in the next, the next part of it, which we specifically list the area of non-compliance in detail. We cite the federal code, the state code, very specifically, the action needs to be taken. And then we do a prioritization, a feasibility, a timeframe, and a rough cost estimate. So, we do that for every item, if I can do it fine, quick and easy, one here as an example. Oh, let me see here. Okay, so this is on the. I'm just trying to get a good one for you.
Library.
Yeah.
Might be tough on that particular building.
Well, this is okay, this is okay. Nine doors, including the bathroom, lack tactile designation signage. Federal codes, section seven oh three, state code, section forty-one. The action is stop, install accessible compliance signage on the latched side of each door with the pro-fishing contracts and character type proportions. Raising bill characters should also be included under five twenty-two CMR. Signage should be sixty inches above finished floor to the centerline of the sign. Tackle characters on a sign should be forty-eight minimum above finished floor. The base on the lowest character is sixty inches max above finished floor to the base on the highest character. Characters must meet the ADA standards with character height, finish, and contrast coupled by grade true braille, section seven oh three ADA standards. So, very specifically, you know, so a lot of times we work with folks and we just finish up plans in Charlton and Ludlow, and especially Ludlow, both their school facilities person and their building facilities person, they've actually taken some of this language and they were doing some work, and they just gave it to the contractor to get price quotes. And either for some of their bathrooms and in the school, I think there was drinking fountains they were doing. So, so that is the format we have. One thing that we do, we look at the stricter standard of the two, either ADA five twenty-one, so there are differences, which is a problem. There are tolerances that are allowed under each industry standard tolerances. If it's zero, two inches is an eighth inch, two to thirty-six, it's half an inch, over more than thirty-six, it's an inch. So, if you're within that tolerance, we don't write it up. But tolerances don't apply to slopes, so max is five point cent for accessible roof, eight point three for ramp. So, if you're ramp, you're eight point five percent, you write it up as, you know, you're, you have to write it up. But in reality, a ramp rather than spend, could be eighty thousand dollars reconstruct a ramp, we'd put a write-up in there that you seek a variance because for that point two percent, the, the cost doesn't benefit, it overrides the benefit gained. So, that's how we address it in the report. Reasonable combinations with DPW fire places, areas which are only used by those personnel. There must be certain ascent, there must be, meet certain requirements for the essential functions of their positions. So, unless you change how those areas were, like the highway employee, their, their bathroom or their employee break room, unless you open it up to the public or there was a reasonable combination request, you wouldn't really have to address those areas. We have that more detailed in the report. ADA governs employee workspaces, five twenty-one CMR does not. So, we do address like your, if their employee kitchenettes and that, those sorts of things. And schools are a nightmare. Talked a little about schools, the schools, so the standards different between ADA, five twenty-one, and one is by age level and the other is, what is by age, the other is by grade level. And then the standards don't jive between the two, and the standards vary according to pre-K, K to three, four to six, and seven to twelve. So, depending upon, you know, how the building's being, and we, and we talk about it, I'm not going in detail, but we, if, if it's a hallway, common bathroom, then we, we talk about an overlap stair, which would need to satisfy both K through three and four to six. We have that in the report, so. So, I'm gonna go through analysis in general, areas of non-compliance, I'll do really quickly. I'm gonna talk at seventy-eight speed. So, in parking, we typically found there was either no designated accessible parking or the signage was actually too, too, too low or it's too high. At least sixty, no more than six inches to the bottom and no more than sixty inches to the top. Uh, I mean, at least six inches to the bottom, sorry, no more than ninety-six inches to the top. Sometimes the running slopes are too steep, no more than two, well, here's an example. No more than two percent is considered, anything above that's not considered level. In some cases, there are no van accessible spaces. Exteriors of travel, in many cases, I think you had this out here as well. You had more than one quarter inch unbeveled and one and a half inch beveled, change in level surface. A lot of times transition from asphalt to concrete. Sometimes easy fix, just you grind the concrete, others it might not be. Typically, we find us all the time that doors have excessive, excessive operating force. Five, in five pounds interior, fifteen pounds exterior, and it must take at least six seconds to close. Office counters, we had a number of them throughout, I think in this building or some others. They exceeded maximum light of thirty-six inches. Some of them were as high as forty-two, forty-three inches. So, thirty-six inches is the maximum light for a service counter, thirty-four inches for a food counter. Stair.
Question?
Yep.
The whole counter has to be thirty-six, or you can do a section?
You can do a section. So, we have it in report and it, it was a thirty-six inch long, very, yes, we have that in.
So, it has to be accessible for somebody in a wheelchair.
But, well, pretty much what it is for writing service. So, I can do a side approach, use a writing service side. If it's up here, I can't, you know, but if it's down here, thirty-six.
So, like, when you're in the town, if you're in the town clerk's office and you're looking at the counter, there's that little writing service out to the side, that's why we did it that way. So, there was an accessible part of the counter.
And sometimes you can put it on below, sometimes, well, people even do, put maybe they put a table on the side, you know, so, yeah, but yeah, that, that works. Many cases, the stair railings are not round or oval shape, they were rectangular, and they lack top and bottom extensions, or they were not at the right height, thirty-four to thirty inches. Same thing with ramp, yeah, ramp railings. Non-compliant hardware, knob style, lack of signage, no tactile and that. But I know you changed things here, but they know there's no tactile designation signage. Or the signage is not on the latch side of the door, and he's been on the latch side, not the inside. We had some, I remember employee workspaces, some of the kitchen counter employee areas, the counters are too high or they lack neat clearance below. protruding objects is something that's more than four inches inaccessible to travel, which I'm not seeing, but let's say that, is that a speaker or is that a?
Camera?
Camera. Let's say the camera was down about another twenty inches. So, anything that's more than four inches into the accessible route of travel, at height of twenty-seven inches, eighty inches above finished floor is a protruding object. If I'm sitting here, I could walk into that. So, some, some things are easy, put, put something underneath for cane detection, a fixed object, and others might need to relocate. So, but we have this in report, you know, what we, what we would do in certain cases. Some cases, you had, there were desks, tables, which were, you didn't have the knee height, twenty-seven inches, so couldn't roll under with a chair. And some cases, doorway thresholds were too high, and some doorways didn't have, they've been required thirty-two inch clear with. And again, all the details is on the report. Bathrooms typically found that coatings were too high for, for adults. Dispenses were too high for adults, forty-two inches max to the operating mechanism, and they were way too high in many locations. The sink piping was not wrapped, guarded, or insulated. There was no grab bars in some cases, some, or the grab bars were either too low or too high. It'd be thirty-three inches, thirty-six inches to the top of the gripping surface. In many cases, the toilet paper dispensers too far from the front of the toilet, seven to nine inches on center. The water, water closet flush control must be on the wide approach side, not on the wall side. And then, in many cases, there wasn't, there wasn't adequate clearances, so it needs to be eighteen inches on center from the ear wall, you need forty-two inches on the firewall, forty-two inches in front for wheelchair mobility. And in many cases, those were not met. And many cases, sink mirrors too high, and where there are stalls, and this is generally, I think, applied to the elementary school. Doors must open out, the stall door, not in, and they must be self-closing, and you have to have interior pull device on both sides. So, in many cases, if you had a stall door, there wasn't self-close, wasn't self-closing, no pull devices, the only way I can close that door is to kind of reach down, get to the bottom of the door and pull it, try to pull it tight, and then latch it. So, recreation areas, lack of accessible to travel fully toward around the facilities, lack of level areas for wheelchairs, had benches, and leisure seating. Picking tables didn't have the proper knee depth, nineteen inches, knee height twenty-seven inches. This is ADA only, I think this applied just to, was it Curtis? Yeah, that was the only area that, uh, no, it might have applied also to the playground at the elementary school. Chain link, yeah, good. Chain link gates must be smoother than base to a height of ten inches on the push side of the, of the gate. So, if I'm in a wheelchair, you know, I don't wanna get caught on that chain link material, so that's. And then obviously, you know, Curtis, Curtis area, the broadcast, which were not accessible, stairs only. We sidewalks and curb ramps, we focus just on a portion of Gardner Road and Worcester Road. Looking back up here in two thousand and seven, wow, night and day, because back then, the sidewalks were deplorable condition.
They were about two, what, a year ago, two years ago?
Yeah.
They were rough.
Yeah, so all new concrete, there's only three areas, three minor. There's one, there was no technical warranty, but I think we talked about that, and it was questioned whether that was even a, was a small little street.
So, it's technically not even a street. I looked it up, it's a driveway.
Okay, so, that's probably why. And then some areas on, on Worcester Road, oh, you can't have any more than two percent cross slope. And a little bit, you know, two and a half, two point six. And then right, I think, pretty much the new work stopped, but when the concrete transition at the bridge, there was about a one inch abrupt change, so there did some grinding or something, but there, actually, new work, I think, stopped at that point, so. So, some, those are the areas of non-compliance, being specific, I'm, I'll give just five or six and, and wrap this up. So, and we find this all the time, which is very unfortunate. We found this in brand, brand-new elementary school buildings that cost fifty million dollars, and they hadn't even full certificate of occupancy yet, where the student bathrooms do not adhere to children's standards. So, eventually, pre-K, K to three, four to six, and we find that you got a mix of adult standards and children, so you got, you know, maybe a seat that's fifteen inches high for a, 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 a twelve or fourteen inch side for a, for a kindergarten person, and grab bars are like, you know, thirty-six inches high. So, it's like, yeah, they're monkey bars to get up and off the toilet, so. Drinking fountains throughout the whole building were low only, and you have drinking problems, must be high and low. And then at the time of the assessment, maybe it still isn't serviced, but the stage was not in service from the assembly area, and also the travel, route travel was blocked to, 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 to access the lift at that, you know, elementary school. So, and that's one of the things that, you know, Mike had pointed out about maintenance, make sure that things are, you know, kept free and clear. Obviously, you know about Hubbardson Library exterior lift, it's, it's archaic, manual operated. It should have been, I mean, well, you know, I'm not gonna, so, that's initial. Probably with the new work you're gonna be doing, because you're changing things around, that's something that would be maybe put in as, or maybe you're gonna change how your whole thing's being done from on grade and, and up, so. But that's a concern about that vertical access there. Your building, your new building, which is in the report, so the stair railings in the front are non-compliant. I mentioned they're, they're not, they're rectangular shaped, they lack top and bottom extensions. The risers are not uniform, so that'd be something that, you know, I, prioritization, I think, if you're looking for M O D funding, it's next year. The front and side stairs are open risers, open risers are no-no. Ludlow's private entities, but just a little no-no, major tripping hazards. So, one thing it did do, which is nice, in the report, we did note that the entrance from the rear had at that point in time, two to three inch abrupt change in level surface. I took a ride there today, you fixed that. Recommendation, this, this came up in our, our presentation in Charlton. We recommend that you will somehow, in this, maybe in a folder back, a checklist of all the things you start to do now to make improvements. Now, it's only, it's already a kudo, they made that improvement. Unfortunately, on the converse, I see you put a new Dropbox in there, and that's not on an accessible route of travel, it's set back five feet from the grass.
Yeah.
So, if I'm in a wheelchair, I can't.
They already got a beat.
We, yeah.
Okay, all right.
If only we already heard that once.
All right, and, and, and.
I called you that day.
And that, and forty, so unaccessible and forty-eight inches, I don't know what the height is of it, but can't.
It needs to be moved.
Okay, then if it gets, forty-eight is the max of the operating mechanism. So, if you need to dig a deeper hole, whatever, then.
It needs to be moved.
Yeah, just needs to.
The whole thing is gonna get.
To give him a little bit of props, the TPW director was adamant that we were putting it in the wrong spot.
Really?
And, but, yeah, and now that all didn't work out, we're gonna put it where he had originally spoken of. Kind of, you know where Melody's office is with the counter? The town clerk's out back, where the, where the new lip is.
Yeah, 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 okay.
Put it out there so that you can get out of your car, there will be handicap parking spaces out back as well.
A lot of people we've seen, you were just, I said, drive-through.
That's what I, that we, yeah, he said, why don't you put on that hand?
A drive-through, and then, now then, you might have looked at forty-eight, but if it's just something to drive up, because I think the Ludlow Library, they're gonna relocate, but they had a book drop as a drive-through, but the location didn't work, but rather have to walk up and air it and relocate it, so it's a drive-through, so, you know, that makes sense too. Long as the height is at the right.
And there'll be people throwing trash in it.
Probably, but, and, and one way or the other, it needs to be accessible.
And we talked, I mean, you know, your bathrooms, there are issues in you, you know, we did a walk around report, there's a bunch of things in your bathrooms there that, that, again, that's. So, the last thing is gonna be on a rec, Curtis rec, so, again, you know this stuff. The sidewalks are in deplorable condition, deteriorated, heaving, the slopes are, are bad. There's no accessible route of travel into the gazebo, stairs only, so.
What's it?
The railings are not compliant. You have a nice new pavilion there, Lions Club, unfortunately, it's not unaccessible to travel. From the, even from the grass, this concrete pad is a two-inch abrupt change in level surface, so. And then the pad itself has a running slope of five point eight to seven percent, which means it requires ramp railings, so now that's a ramp, it's not accessible roof. So, that's, those are expensive, railing above, uh, four and fifty dollars a linear foot here. So, I don't know how many feet it is, that's, you know.
To go all the way around, you mean?
No, just to the ramp up into the pavilion.
Okay.
There's a concrete pad.
Yeah.
So, there's, there's grass.
Yeah.
Which is shouldn't be accessible, stone dust is fine, to that pad. Now, in that pad, now you've got a two-inch abrupt change from the grass to that pad. So, now that's, that's an obstruction. And now that pad, rather than be five percent running slope, it's a five point eight to seven point something. That qualifies now as a ramp. So, that means it needs paired railings for that entire distance. And that's in the report, so we've got, we've got.
For the whole pavilion?
For the whole ramp.
There would have been access to get to the pavilion.
To get up into.
But it's gonna be a long ramp to get to.
Well, you know what? If you give, there with me for a second here.
You have to go by degrees.
So, we just build up all the grass around it.
Well, we still gonna be.
The way out, just build it up. Might be cheaper.
I think, but I still don't think that makes it accessible, it's grass.
No, no, you'd have to do, you'd have, you could just, you'd have to do stone dust.
Yeah, and then make it a solid, kind of a solid.
Yeah, a ramp, so that way the ramp isn't.
You could come from, there is some, from the.
Build it up.
Uh-huh.
By the gazebo, and then there's asphalt, and then you can either continue asphalt or stone dust to the pavilion.
Yeah, because all it is is grass.
And then at the pavilion, which I have a photo here. We don't, but it's written. The. Yes. Oh, plus there's stone in it, there's stone there too.
Yeah, there's rock around.
Yeah, so it's even more, so you have grass here.
Yeah.
Then you have a rock.
Yeah.
Problematic, and then from that rock up to that, another two inches, and then this ramp itself, which isn't very long.
Okay, so that one is.
That ramp would then be, so this would need to be either, cheaper is asphalt, and again, if you're looking at chapter, we have about accessible materials for route to travel. Asphalt, stone dust would be fine, get rid of this stone dust up here, and then you would need paired railings. Unless if you regraded, get rid of the pad, and then regraded the whole thing and make less than five percent approach, which would be cheaper. Because of paired railings and I could look at this in a second.
Sounds like the line is easy to another fundraiser.
Yeah, I mean, this is.
Yeah, just putting down some dirt and reseating, yeah, and getting it up.
Stone dust and burn it up.
But you'd wanna, you'd wanna like really, you'd want to do the whole front.
You would.
And then get rid of that ramp.
At least, at least four feet, three foot, yeah, four feet wide, three foot clear width. It would be about thirty five hundred plus for ramp railings, because the stuff's expensive.
Yeah.
So.
Like putting dirt down, like. And then new, a new, yeah, to make it go up, so you don't have.
It would be cheaper, and actually, there's a lot of the gazebo's, you couldn't do it in the York gazebo here, it's too high. But a lot of the gazebo's that we looked at, they've ended up making a nice further than approach to it gradual and keep it under five percent, it's a lot cheaper working, little stone on the side, and that would be the way to do it. Cheap, otherwise you put metal, expensive. So that's it, a quick rail overview. Any questions, if you guys, if you're gonna post it, you know, on website, people have comments, we'll hold off. Or Connor, because it's gonna be, Connor will hold off and make any final changes if there aren't any at all. And when everything's got the green light, then Connor will get you whatever copies are required, hard copies, and we'll get electronic copies too. And then the other thing we always tell folks is that if things come up in the future, you know, you have both Mike and I contact information. We regularly, we still reschedule plans five years ago. Might not travel up to Halifax, which is two and a half hours, or Saltwood, which is, for me, is another two hours or whatever. But, you know, we always say, listen, give us the information, take a photo of it, give us whatever you're doing, and we can provide you with what you should be done, I expect, or a little sketch, whatever, and we can send an email that back to you.
Oakham's really close.
What's that?
Oakham's really close, this doesn't work out, that's where you're from, right?
Holyoke.
Holyoke.
I used to live in Hardwick.
Used to live in Hardwick.
I live in Holyoke, which is an hour from here, there's no easy way. It's ninety-one, Masspike, Palmer, Ware, Hardwick, Gibbleville, Barry, and Hubbardson, all back way from. So it's an hour and.
I go to Holyoke every three to four weeks, so.
Three or four weeks.
Three, four weeks, I'm in Holyoke.
Is it in Holyoke?
Depends on where you're from.
Yeah.
So if you're from Western Mass, it's Holyoke.
So any other questions, or?
No, Nate, is this, are you planning to put this on the website?
Yes, I already put that in a minute.
At our next meeting, we'll normalize a vote to only accept the plan.
Yep, one is.
Yep.
Thank you, John, thank you very much for coming.
Thank you for, thank you for having us.
Appreciate your time.
Now, I do have a seventy-year-old Brumman canoe, which if you're willing to.
It's been very nice to meet you. We're moving on here.
Thank you so much.
That would not be accessible, would it?
It would not, I still use a fishing hook.
It's been a pleasure to work with you guys, and we got the grant and named you guys as the consultants. It's been a really good experience, and I appreciate all you do.
Excellent, thank you. Yeah, thanks.
Now we just need an eight million dollar.
One nice thing about that canoe guy, it didn't make me appear soul language, by the way, I'm very sorry about that.
Oh, it's fine.
No, it's absolutely fine.
Between construction and rush hour. And I just took back, I take back roads. Well, I came, last time we did our startup meeting, many months, many months ago, and I left early on purpose, and thank God, because I mentioned, it's all back roads from, you know, starting from Hardwick and all that. And coming from Ware, I got caught behind a logging truck, the whole way up to Route Two. Yeah, and it's like, I just made it in the nick of time.
It could have been worse, it could have been like a trash truck.
Well, it's a nice ride.
It is a nice, it's a beautiful ride, no, I enjoyed the ride, I mean, I used to, I don't know.
Except in the winter, two oh two makes me way nervous.
Two oh two, yes.
Cause the trees get heavy and they like just.
Yes, yep, all right, we're gonna move on, and thank you guys, we're gonna move on to the consent agenda. Now, the minutes are, we can't do them if we need to make those out, but everything else looks pretty much.
Can you make a motion to table the meeting minutes?
Take it, take it.
Okay. So moved. Peter, I just made a motion to table the meeting minutes, would you mind seconding my question?
I didn't hear, I was yawning.
That's okay, let's have a vote, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstained, moving forward. All right, so can I get a motion to accept the now new consent agenda, minus the minutes?
So moved.
The only comment I have here is I don't think the Mary Peter appointments to the finance committee for the regional dispatch are proper select board appointments, but we can still do it this way, and put them there.
Okay, so that's just like kind of premature, or?
No, it's just letting people, letting us know, and it's more transparent, but it's not necessarily something that needs a formal select board appointment.
But it's better to have it on there than not, okay. All right, did I get a motion? Was it seconded?
Seconded.
All right, all in favor? Aye. Aye, opposed, abstained, moving forward, all right, next up?
Great.
Just for the record, can we, I would like to have it.
Nope, it's fine, my brain just had it.
I would like to thank Claudia Provenchial and Susan Bregi for years and years and years of service to the Memorial Day Committee. Those are going to be very large and very nice shoes to fill.
Very nice.
And I, so I hope they find their way back into it somehow, but thank you very much, Claudia and Sue.
Thank you. All right, moving along, we have new business. We have a debt schedule review. Nate, you wanna take us through that whole discussion and, good stuff.
So thank you, earlier today, I sent out about a two paragraph explanation of all of the documents. And long story short, the discussion that we should have are is between the two options of taking out the bond anticipation notice and hoping that interest rates will go down, or just accepting that interest rates may go up and borrowing permanently.
They're gonna come down.
So, and the other thing though, my question, we are, you're still, regardless whether we extended a year or not, we're still, your goal is to end at the same year.
That is.
Regardless.
Yep.
So what do we think?
Because there would be that payment still with the bond anticipation note, so you're just kind of kicking the can.
So what is our financial advisor and Mary, our treasurer collector, recommend? They don't get, they think it's a small enough number, because it's still a what, point two million dollars difference?
There are, there are many, many, many variables.
Right, in interest, you mean, the cost?
Yeah, so the total, if you look at the total cost at the end of the day, right, so if you do it one way and you borrow now, I think it came to, what was it, like six million, we have like five points.
Five point, yeah, and even that doesn't take into consideration some of the major variables like interest rate change or.
Because if the interest rates go down, then waiting would be good. They may not.
They're going down.
I, that's what, so if you ask A I and things like that, they projected to go down. But I, how much do we wanna trust Google and A I and all that stuff?
Trust me.
Trust you? Cause you know.
So if at any point, if at any point the interest rates go to a point where, well, we can't miss this, the financial advisor will call.
Okay.
And we'll figure all that out.
You need to get your shit together now. What do you, what do you think, Heather, do we wanna move with this?
I think we wait, we wait, I was leaning on that as well.
I think that's the general consensus, I was also leaning that way, that's what, and that's been kind of the past practice on what we've done with a couple of different things.
This is a little politics going on with the treasury. The rate should have gone down already, just by what's been going on, and they're refusing to lower, so they're talking about lowering it by a half a point in another four weeks or so.
Yeah.
But that's only a half, it's gonna come tumbling back.
So your action, you're choosing to wait, dot, 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 yes, or you're choosing to.
We don't need a, oh, I will instruct Mary and the financial advisor that the general consensus of the select board in a non-voting capacity was to do the bond anticipation notice.
So just for those watching at home who don't have this document, so the difference is a expected total of six million dollars if we borrow now or potentially five point nine five million dollars if we borrow next year. But that is a savings, right, like it's not massive, but assuming everything falls.
Well, it could be much, could be much bigger than that if it drops a point and a half or two points. You're talking standard.
It could go up. It could go up, it could.
It's like going, it's like going to the casino, right?
Could totally bite you, but.
Coming down.
All right, so the next thing up is community room review discussion.
All I wanna know from you guys is, is there anything that you think we should be one hundred percent looking at that might slip through my slash our thought process? Like, is there something that you've been in these meetings going, oh, you know, Peter needs a chiropractor?
Yeah, I need a, I need a neck crack.
And I've already discussed with Peter that the value of having a second mirror television, as long as we can figure that out.
Swivel seats.
I just don't want these benches, if you ever sat on those things for a while.
No, so benches are not coming.
Set them on fire.
If I had a seat that swiveled.
No, that'd be beautiful in our meeting house.
So, um, what I've talked to, so the room is almost complete, as in it's bare bones.
Yes, I was in there today.
The charter needs coming and do their stuff. So we built a physical room for cable access, so they no longer have to wait for the police to show up. She will have access to come and go as she needs.
I brought Bridget there right before the meeting to show where to sit.
Can I, can I get in there sometime?
Yes, of course, if you come over tomorrow, I'll bring you around. Um, then the floor is flooring, everything is one level, it's, um.
What's the color? It's kind of green.
I did say green, I don't remember what.
The color of the walls or the color of the floor?
No, I saw the floor.
Oh, the color of the walls is this really pretty, um, blue-green color, um, it's called, um.
Light though?
It's light, like it's light, um, it's almost the same color as Heather's shirt.
Okay. All right. Okay.
Oh, mint chula.
That's not gray, you are so blind.
That's not gray.
It's mint, it's mint chula.
Um, so I went with a light color, a soft color that'll also look good on the other end of the recording.
It looks great, yeah.
They don't want you guys behind green screen.
Yeah.
It might be fun, but no.
Why don't we do some cool background?
No, we talked about doing the stacking chairs that come up like on the thing, so that we can set up the room as needed, but then stack all the chairs to the side, so the room is pretty much empty when we're not using.
So ones that, like a folding chair or one with arms?
No, they're like, they're, the ones like from town meeting that we, but newer versions that are not from eighty-five from the school
Okay.
for people to sit in that are in the audience, that way we can move them as needed, we can use them in other spaces if we need to. Um, and that way the floor is clear when we're not using it.
That has been an odd issue that we've come into sometimes.
What size is?
Chairs to bring to somewhere else.
Yeah.
What size is the room? Smallness?
Thirty, thirty, bigger than this, I think Lou told me thirty-three by twenty-five or something like that.
It's about the same size.
Really, is that big?
It's, it's pretty.
You can't, when the walls came down, I couldn't get over how big that space actually was.
Yeah, yeah, oh yeah.
Because the room was just chopped up so weird with the interior walls.
Yeah.
Able, just the fact that we'll be able to set up in different structures. This table has been a workhorse for you guys, but this, it's a one-trick pony as well.
Can't get the ones that Heather kicks.
I was thinking it was going through the dimensions, they just, it's in a light.
Yeah, don't get the ones that.
Something, we'll look through it, but I wanna get the, the goal was the room structure, now the tech.
Okay.
And then we'll.
And you said that the cameras are going to be either a lights on or there's no light, so that way we know it's.
So we're going to put, what I was talking to Bridget about, is put a light on the wall.
Oh.
Like literally, she hits button, like turns.
Okay. Okay. Live.
Like you're on the air.
Yes.
And then when we're off.
Okay.
Off.
All right.
Now, you're gonna make this room eighty-eight compliant?
The room is as of this moment eighty-eight compliant for getting there. I do not think we, well, we do not have the monies to purchase the additional listening devices, but.
I understand that.
Is, is the bathroom?
That's a tight corner.
Set, set, yeah, I don't think so, to get into it, I don't think it is, but it's not tiny little closet either, so it's gonna be.
It's a step in the right direction.
It's, yeah.
It's a step in the right direction for what that building's going to eventually be.
I agree with that, I agree with that.
And then that way we can get out of here and give the seniors exactly what we promised them, basically.
Yeah. Yes, moving forward.
And then I spoke with Bridget today about what we would do in the case of multiple meetings on the same night, and we actually have way more options, we can record over here, we can, if the small meeting like the Parkinson Rec who aren't expecting anybody, they can meet up in our office in that, in that room that's available to anybody. We're going to be making a sign-up app to sign up for everything, everything except for the senior center. The senior center does not want to be on it and wants to do the.
The paper.
The paper, and that is okay.
So is the artwork from here going over there, or is?
It's already over there.
Okay. Already, it's open up.
It's, it's, um, I stashed it.
With the clock.
With the clock, um, I stashed it in Mel's office, so that when, um, Lou gives me the go-ahead, we'll, we'll fix, we'll get some things back up, but we're gonna hesitate, wait until we have all the technology up.
Even if that exact art in piece don't make it up on that wall, those will be utilized somewhere in that building.
They'll make it somewhere.
Somewhere.
Okay. Yeah, those are prints that I think Ryan did.
Ryan did the ones.
Yep.
So we'll, we'll want to, I promoted the heck out of that one shot Gary took of downtown, so maybe I'll talk to Gary, but I would like to get some updated versions of different photos, and that's something we can do, we'll make it.
Maybe some more different historical links back in, like, you know.
There was a lot of photos in the archive that I don't think Gary's ever seen that were out there in Tahquian Society in Worcester that were donated, someone cleaned out their estate, found out they were from the Worcester area, and nobody here in Hubbardson's ever seen them, because no one's ever checked them out.
Oh, Gary should go down there, cause he's doing a book, I think, he's looking for stuff.
Yeah. So.
Yeah, so you should mention that to him.
Cause she found him, she found him when I went down to do the first meeting house stuff.
Yeah, yeah, so you should mention that to him.
Oh.
I'd like to put something from Gary up in there, cause he did support the room, you know?
Yeah.
Gary and Al are the cable officials.
I know, all right, so do you need anything else, is there anything that people wanted to see in there that they, because that's basically what he asked us.
Side of the table, how they room key?
I'd have to think, I'd have to go get a visual of the room first, and.
Okay.
I think some of it's gonna be, you know, I think this is all great starts, and I don't think we really know what we're ultimately gonna need beyond what we've already adapted to, and so we're using it and going, hey, me. What'd be great is if.
With.
A comfy chair.
It's not my M O, but the goal of the room is ease and function. In a perfect world, I would like for someone to be able to come in, hit teens.
Everything just works, you don't have to fight with it.
Like, I've seen a couple of those work, other ones, not so much, but.
Yeah, cause we've seen a struggle all the time.
It's always a struggle.
Now you're planning for that room to double as the emergency management.
Yeah, that's why the room will double as the emergency management room, which is why Judy was able to utilize her grant to get the new badge printer, so.
Badge printer? And see what's saying, play it for me?
Finally, I can get a nutrition ID.
Yep.
We have to.
We have to schedule picture day.
Picture day.
I do.
Badge for what, town IDs?
Yep, I do.
Cause I need a new one.
Yep, no, uh, this.
You can use a new green screen. I've never even had one.
Huh?
Never even had one. I've never even had one, never even had one, I'm like, at this point, if you don't know where I am, you're.
I think everybody, I think everybody who works for the town and the select board members and like certain stuff, they're gonna get them, because I just think, so I contacted Life Touch, actually, the the school picture company.
Oh geez.
To see, cause sometimes they contract out to other photography studios to do the headshots, so I contacted them and they were actually super helpful, they've done this for multiple municipalities. And they were like, yep, no, here's all the people in your area that we contract out to, so feel free to give them a call.
Do you remember?
School picture day and how traumatizing it was.
I do, I wasn't having, I wasn't having fond memories, so um, I was thinking I could just do my own version of drawing my face and use ChatGPT to modify my photo.
No, that's okay.
I hate it.
Traumatize it.
Yes.
Apparently you can make head shots on Canva, you just upload the photo and it uses AI to make it, make you a headshot.
Take selfies with the wind. Mine are creepy.
Mine are super creepy, I don't like it at all.
Mine are from the sixties.
Alright, well, I think we're getting down a rabbit hole a little bit deeper than we need.
Okay, we're going down some weeds, yeah. Yup, okay.
I'm sure I request that we table the FY twenty six select board strategic goals until the meeting of August fourth.
That is a hundred percent acceptable to me, we can move on to old business.
Do you need a motion to request to table that since you did for the minutes?
Alright, so let's have a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to table the item FY twenty six select board strategic goals until the next meeting of the full board.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, moving on. Alright, so now we go to old business, you said none, alright, town administrator report.
None. I'll give you guys a real good one at the next meeting.
Oh, they better be fancy.
This was longer than I just.
If it has any pie charts, make sure they're different colors, alright.
I will double check his work on the colors.
Alright, policies to review?
Not at this time.
Alright, do we have any matter?
Is there any policies that you would like to see reviewed in the next couple of meetings?
Well, that ADA policy looked like it was from like twenty seventeen and I pulled it up, so. But I'm sure you'll, there's a timeline though.
I am working on a, an aspect of this whole, everything's going to be in one place all at once, is moving all of the policies and forever documents into the document center on the website, so I'm slowly but surely doing that, it's a pain in the butt, but.
So, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
So on forty eight, is anytime you do new construction on top of a building, you have to bring the whole building up, pick up all that?
No.
No?
Only if it's part of it, yeah, thirty percent, or what'd he say, over a hundred thousand or something like that, over a five year period or some, it, there's, there's right, so he has to keep track of how much we're spending over five years.
Thirty percent.
Cause then it throws us into the boat, we will have to, or if you were, thirty percent.
So far, in terms of construction improvements, we've spent probably fifteen thousand dollars.
And we haven't done thirty percent of that in the structure, so.
No, thirty percent of the total value of the structure.
Didn't.
The value should just keep going up, so that's.
The building.
The building is probably worth a little over a million dollars or now.
You sure, I think it's thirty percent of the actual square footage.
More than what we paid for?
Absolutely.
Higher total value.
Cause that's what threw me into a, a whole keep of something on my garden building was thirty percent. Had nothing to do with a dollar, I had to do a square footage.
I double checked that.
Not a ton of that building with the roof and the siding and everything on it for seven hundred thousand dollars.
Anyway, so you'll follow up with that, but yeah, was that all you had, Peter, or follow up, okay.
Sorry.
Can I ask a, a question that feel free to shoot it down, does anyone know, I've gotten four messages about this explosion in Pinecrest, do you know?
Someone suggested it was an earthquake that registered on the seismographic goal thing in Harvard or one of those.
Yes. Yeah, and. Yeah, whatever, it's towards Boston.
Listen.
Cause I was touring the uh Facebook messages on that, and someone commented, they showed the graph.
I was, yeah, I was too.
But the earthquakes don't make bones.
Yeah, they do.
They could have moved something that could have gone.
I, it didn't shake the ground, the ground didn't shake.
No, I know, we don't know.
No, there was one that happened not that long ago, and they were suggesting, maybe the cannon guy moved to Princeton, the, the cannon guy from Templeton.
I thought something exploded in my basement.
So I, yeah, the cannon guy.
The position guy.
I really thought something exploded in my basement, and my windows rattled.
Hmm, I had no, what, I didn't hear anything, and I was outside, but I don't know what inside sound, so, I didn't hear anything.
I was like, what, what was that? Checked every room.
Yeah, like you freaked out.
Where did you?
Alright.
I wasn't freaking out, like, what was that?
Alright, so the other, anything else, right now, any matters not reasonably anticipated by chair?
I have a question for you guys.
Uh-oh, here we go.
I'm so sorry, so usually when a grant is applied for, it has a twenty thousand dollar or over price tag, if you need select board approval.
Okay.
However, in our, in our journey, I have unfortunately applied to, not unfortunately, yay, applied for grants.
Okay.
But collectively, because they all apply for at the exact same time, it's not a collective.
Okay.
Okay, cause we were insured, because the grant cycle for the library, it all hits in like the month of July, August. And I applied the entire same day, and the total came over.
And I'm willing to say this in front of the select board, I haven't exactly been stringent with the grant policy if there's no town commitment. Like, if we're just taking a shot in the dark and there's no match, and there's no.
Right, yeah.
Match.
I don't think any of us would come back and, and say.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, I tried to find.
I don't think anyone would be mad in town about that either.
If none of them were matching grants, they're all like Walmart Dollar General, like they're all Mass Cultural Council, they're all just, it just, it's so happened that when I, hey,
Yeah. Yeah. Shop, I can see what happens.
Apply, when the, and I was filling out the spreadsheet, that the total started to accumulate.
Yeah.
As long as it's not, and this is, this is not policy, and maybe we review it someday and make it policy, in my opinion, if it's not a match or creating something brand, brand new that might be controversial, if you're just seeking money for projects, or then, for the most part.
Yeah. Yeah, till like, for like, by certain.
Well, that's, it's most of the, all the grants that we're applying for right now is for the programming, the programming space, just to get some upgrades that, like CPC funds don't cover furniture.
Water, yeah.
Like, to get, you know, things for the room or whatever, that makes it accessible.
So, if you, if you went rogue and applied for a dog park, then maybe we'd have to talk about it, but that, but that, that's an accepted project that is on our priority list.
That would be different. Yeah, we've already went through all that with the.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, so.
Okay, I just, I saw the twenty thousand, and like, it wasn't super clear, and I was like, I'll just, I, I told the trustees, I would ask you guys.
Okay. You lost?
Okay, anything else?
I got you, do we have any, do we have any other, um, matters not reasonably anticipated?
You lose it.
Sorry.
No, alright, so then can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained, alright.